All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to their solid which stands, on a nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Have a prayer now.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and all that you do for us. Please bless all who are here and help us in making good decisions for our borough. We ask this in your name, Lord Jesus, amen.
Roll call.
Bob Barlett.
Roger.
Scott Detzschall. Lisa Nutson. Steve Nutson. Mr. Moore. Heavy. Jim Still.
Anybody wants to speak? Here's the rules. Three-minute time limit. Subject matter must be related to agenda. You must identify yourself and name and address. Make sure you live in the borough. Turn it over. Oh, yeah, we have to pick up two because of the agenda. All in favor say aye. I need a motion to approve the sent agenda. Send move. All in favor say aye. Pose. Now I'll turn it over to the borough manager.
Good evening, everyone. Got a list of topics to cover, but shouldn't take too long. First thing is CDGB options. I know we have the CDCOG reps here. Thanks for coming, Jamie. And then Mike Fonti from the county. But we got some options here to look at or discuss and consider for CDGB dollars coming up here in the future. We have roughly, if I remember, let's say one hundred twenty-five thousand now. Got about another roughly, we'll say one hundred twenty-five thousand coming for next year. So next summer we'll have roughly, roughly two hundred fifty thousand. So what do we want to do with it? Some options on here we'll discuss quickly. First thing is Virginia Avenue Stormwater Sewer Management. Pulled some pictures up here for you. Excited to kind of see what we're talking about. So real quickly, let's see, four rains. So you can see we got it all cleaned off down here. Now just throw these, you'll notice what it looks like after a rain. This is a borough street. When they did Valley Street, they did put this inlet in, the stormwater inlet, to try to help us with Valley Street because there was nothing in this general area.
It's not showing up on the street.
Oh, it's not. Taking my word for it, it's air.
I can see it.
Kick some wires out of the roof.
Your HDM, I pull it out and put it back in.
Oh, you see mine? Not coming up with either one? Mouse isn't showing up either. So this is before the rain. You can see the condition is up here. You see what's one of our parks we maintain? Fifth Ward is at the top of the hill. You see how rough it is? This is the inlet I was just referring to. You couldn't see right here on Valley Street? That they put in to help, try to help with this process with the stormwater. And then we had the rain, not the, this is what it looks like up on top. That's the system we have. That's what it looks like after it rains. Every time it rains, this happens. We get it cleaned up, and this is what it happens. In the winter, it's bad because the snow melt, it's on the sidewalk, and it freezes, and we get numerous complaints from citizens about the ice. So here's Virginia Avenue. It goes like this. This is Fifth Ward, borough property. This is Fifth Ward. So that's option one. Mifflin County Housing Authority. They reached out to CDCOG and they would like to use the money for roofs, GFI outlets, things, smoke detectors, that kind of stuff. Anything you want to say about this, Jamie, that should be brought up to council that you got knowledge of?
Sure. So Tyler Dombrowski, our program director, went to Mifflin County's project review meeting, and the housing authority had brought these projects to their attention. And because they're located in the borough, that's why we brought them to you. County obviously can't put their CDPG money into borough, projects in the borough that way. So I believe there are the roofs that need replaced on low-income housing and then some electrical upgrades at a low-income housing apartment sites in the borough. Brought them to you again because they're in the borough.
I think they're looking, they have a number on here, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And these are, I guess, all the roofs and the GFI outlets and stuff that a bunch of them.
Isn't the housing? Go ahead. Isn't the housing authority fund subsidized through the federal government?
What? So we do have a, we do have a home and whole home program that is subsidized. But they are currently, we're still working on getting that open on the floor. And so once we get those opened on, we'll give the funding to housing projects. It's just once we get the contract stuff out. Uh, we'll get that started again.
Thank you.
Are these private owned?
Yes.
Okay. Are they owned by the public or by you?
These, although, these are housing, I believe the housing authority owns the apartment complexes, and then the homes are owned by individuals, correct? Individual property owners, homes.
The third one is updating Victory Park. We have the boat grant, the grant opens in September. And this will basically upgrade Victory Park boat access. You can see this is the area that's on the screen here where the boat is. It would entail basically pushing out this back wall here or moving this so we have more room to get into the area with the boats because it's one of the planes we have. Fixing the parking area up here. Possibly fixing some of the drainage that runs down near the boat launch. The design. They just did one for Juniata County, and I think it was fifty-eight thousand dollars. And it was, let's see if I can test this. So we do have money. I mean, it's not, it wouldn't take all the CDGB money, but it's a chunk of money we could use to fix and improve the area or Victory Park. They'd asked me to do this a couple years ago. I ran into the fish director, fish commission director at a meeting in State College, and he asked me to look into this for the borough because it's our program. And the person that's in charge of the program is actually from Louis Towne. So they're just waiting here back if we decide to do it or not, so they can help us. Now, the rec park upgrade, I don't have a bunch of, I don't have any pictures on here because you all know what a rec park looks like. But we don't have handicapped access down there. We don't have any handicapped equipment. The fences are peeling up from the bottom. The paving is pretty bad. So that is one option is using some of the money for rec park. Last side, or last option is east side paving or alley paving. We do have alleys that need paved in the borough. Last year, we kind of narrowed it down to kind of like top ten or twelve for discussion because we do have state local fuels money as well. They could be used in conjunction with CDGB money if they went and paved some of these alleys using CDGB money. It could be a match internally between the borough.
We could decide on this tonight.
That was going to be my next question. I was going to ask Jamie on this. So I was going to ask Jamie. Jamie, your thoughts, please, on this?
Sure. First, let me introduce Carol. She is our new CDVG project coordinator at CDCOG. She will be coming to handle Mifflin County as we get her trained.
Hello, Carol.
She's following along with me tonight. So the plan was originally for you to decide on your project this evening. We have time. If you wish to push that back, you can. Some of these projects, obviously, we would need to develop a little bit more like the Virginia Avenue or the east side alley paving. We need to really take a look at who's the beneficiaries of those specific projects are before we can say yes or no what qualifies for funding. The two park projects, I think, would be all right doing them under borough-wide benefit as they're borough-owned parks to be maintained and operated for benefit of borough residents, fifty-one percent or more of which are LMI according to the data. And the housing authority one, like Mike just said, they are getting their homes and funding in place. So I wouldn't really worry about considering that one too, too long this evening. But yeah, so tonight was your project selection. If you would rather wait and move it back to the next meeting, we can do that. The application isn't due until November first, but obviously we need time to advertise the final hearing for the county, which is, the final hearing at the county is September nineteenth, so that will get advertised early September. When's your next meeting?
September second or something?
No. Yeah. Yeah, that's going to push us probably too late. Yeah, because the county has to have their final hearing advertised before that. So all projects need to be on that ad.
September, you said September twenty-ninth or nineteenth, is that right?
Their meeting is the nineteenth, and we run that ad at least ten days prior to the meeting. So that's going to put us before your next meeting.
Okay, so when you look at the timelines on here, good question, Jamie, thanks.
Yes.
For council, the Virginia Ave project is not listed on any of the maps. So on the LMI map she's referring to, there are certain parts of town that no matter where you look, on any map, it's not there. Virginia Ave is one of them. But it's on the borough map that shows it's the LMI of sixty-two percent of whatever it is. So if it was in one of those specific maps, it'd be okay. But because it's not a specific map, a borough-wide map, for some reason, they look at it differently. I don't know how. So the new maps are supposed to come out one August. You guys get the new maps yet?
Yeah, so we are working on the new maps. I was able to see it on the one website that DCD direct us to take a look at. You have to look at it like who travels on Virginia Avenue. So while it might be in a low-income block group, it doesn't mean everybody in that block group is driving on it. For instance, if you have no reason to drive on Virginia Avenue unless you live there, your only beneficiaries are the people who live there. See what I'm saying? We'd have to survey those homes. Same way with the alley paving, east side paving thing. We really need to look at where are they in conjunction to who's using them and go that route.
So a couple of things council has to look at is timing this, when these grants are open. The boat grant opens up in September. The rec park one opens up in January. So we have a little time to work on both. Now both those involve Eads because Lucas, Lucas' engineer firm is the one that drives, has to do the site drawing, site plans and stuff for everything. So he has to have time to work on that based on the timeline.
And this funding we're talking about tonight won't be here until next year.
Right, correct.
You've got time from mine.
So you just need to, you don't have to make a decision tonight. But I want to present everything to you with county, with CDGB here, probably for the next county meeting or for the next borough meeting, which is September. You'll have to make a decision on that.
I think that's going to be too late to get it advertised for the final hearing.
So you guys can make a decision tonight based on what's presented.
I'm not in favor of voting on it because you just threw it out right now and you want, you want us to decide on stuff we don't even know?
Well, we
Women plus this plus its own private homes.
We do know Victory Park can be done. We definitely know Rec Park can be done. Paving can be done, but because of the CDGB requirements and possible surveys and stuff, that could be delayed. Same with Virginia Ave. I mean, it's, to me, it's obvious. You see how bad Virginia Ave is. It's an LMI area. It's a done deal. But it doesn't work that way. I wish it did, but it doesn't. So if you have to make a decision tonight, I'd either vote for Victory Park or Rec Park or do both. Because the person I think you get money to do both, you can get two out of five.
So I have a question. There's, let's say, let's say we selected one project and there was money left over. Do the remaining funds carry over to next year?
Yes, so you get your grant every year. And as Kim was talking about, your 2023 money has just, is just now arriving. So you have that in some street projects. You may want to reallocate it to something else now that you've looked or, you know, thought of other options. We can deal with that when that money's here. This is 24 money, won't be here till next year. So right now, we're choosing the project or projects. If once we get those done, there's money left, that's still your money to reallocate to something else, provided it's within the contract timeframe. So as Kim was saying, I would agree with him to probably choose, I, one of the park projects. I mean, you could choose to split the money between them, but as we all know, money doesn't go very far nowadays. So I would, I would suggest choosing one park project. Put your money in that. And then if for some reason it doesn't come to fruition with the other branch you're looking at or something along those lines, we can revisit it and put the money in something. We can do street surveys and put the money in that at a later date. So you're not completely just locked into what you select tonight if circumstances change.
I'll make a motion we proceed with D rec park area.
In a second.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Is there anything else you need to ask for, Kim?
No, ma'am.
Well, loudly hang around if you want.
Yeah, we're good.
All right.
We're good. I'm glad you're here and showed up and provided the advice. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, you're welcome to stay. I mean, you don't have to. And then you got Mooseburg or something you have to go back to?
Yeah, we're going back to Mooseburg.
Okay.
I think you'll be a stop and shy bear on the way.
See you, Jamie.
Thank you so much.
See you.
I'd be glad to entertain any questions if you have. So just shoot them to Kim and then send them to me.
I got Mike.
Yeah, and you got Mike.
See ya.
Thank you.
So we'll move forward. D rec park upgrade. We'll keep, we'll work with these on this and keep you guys apprised of this. Number two, digester number one repair status, Eads. Anything you want to add about the digester repair?
Digester repair number one is going great at this stage. The unfortunate thing report is due to the flooding last Friday. The contractor has pulled out for this particular week due to the emergencies that they have in their manpower and everybody else needing some emergency. So I say it's going great because we haven't found anything of calamity that has caused the problem. So it's basically just cleaning at this point. And the amount of debris that's hung up in the two suction pipes there. Thank you, Kim, for the photograph. This is probably a week ago.
No, it was just a couple of days, August thirteenth yesterday.
So that's what it looks like. It's starting to green up now. The sun came up, and that's how far we are down. There's a little bit ways to go yet, but from a, from a project standpoint, it's going great because we didn't find that problem, structural problem with the piping that we suspected we may have found. But it's going good.
Thanks, Tom.
Anything else on our digester?
Realistically, we're going to have to time right for the roof to get it pulled out for the, put the roof back on.
We expect to have the roof on the street by the end of next week, early the following week, so that we can come next month to your board meeting once it award of a contract.
They had a pre-bid meeting yesterday or the day before? Zeke, when was that? You had the meeting with the guys from Jersey?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. So they were to start talking to Scott County, get the bids.
Do you have any ballpark figures yet that you think that might come in at or?
More around a half million. Yeah, we had some quotes around a half million for the roof supply.
And once we award a contract, what's the build time?
The unfortunate thing there is there's about a twenty-week lead time on the materials. So the build time is putting us into late February, early March.
All right, 2025, that one, right?
Correct, correct. Now, the follow-up, that's a good question, Matt. Follow-up on that, too, is we're looking at cleaning out and servicing digesters number two and three after number one is done. So that would be next year, 2025. I have to look at that time for a minute. All right, II status, DEP consent order, semi-final report submitted. I think I emailed this to you. You have it. DEP confirmed receipt. They didn't have any questions at the time. I talked to them on the phone this week. So that was done and submitted. Excuse me. And we got the reports from Dairy Township and Grandville Township in there as well. Military banners. We are starting our second round of military banner program. We are working internally in this. We're not using an outside vendor. Let's see if I can find military banners. Caitlin has took the lead on this, and she's working through the people who did the banners for the pool. And we are getting quotes from them. And so here's our first, what it looks like for our first round. Dave mail this guy. It was Bruce's dad. So these are what the banners are going to look like. We're going to get these and start putting it out. Whenever we move forward, we're going to get that and get it put up in drop time. So people are all in the call. They call and meet, they care. It's, they got to pay for it, but it's going to be like sixty bucks or something. The other companies we researched were like a hundred and fifty dollars or something like that. By us going through the UPS store and State College, which is one of the pool banners, we're getting a good deal through them. So if anybody wants a banner, please reach out to me, and we'll get this thing advertised as soon as we get the proofs and stuff written down. GSL Consulting. I believe I sent this to you, too. This is a company I met with to consider helping us procure grants in big dollars, specifically for the police station. Because I believe that we do need to do our own, our own police station in town. I got the contract, I sent it out to you. I read it. I didn't like it. Sent it to Mark. Mark doesn't like it. I think we should move on. But just giving you a heads up on it, we're doing the research on, as we move forward in this, but I don't think we're going to go with GSL Consulting.
What was it in the contract that you didn't like?
Well, there was a couple of things. One was their fee, which I personally like. Maybe you guys like it's twelve percent. So if we get a million-dollar contract, we got to pay them a hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of our general fund for their services. But there's legal language in there that Mark didn't like.
Yeah, there's some indemnification language. It's very broad where you would be indemnifying them for any loss resulting in any way out of this transaction, which to me just doesn't make sense.
I'll reach back out to him, tell him my thoughts, just to let you, kind of, get back in. Look, utility delinquency layers. Let me find. I never worked on those. Summer or staff downstairs or wouldn't that bill goes out there? So I don't, I don't have, Summer, I don't think I have a copy of the actual letter, but what I have in here is the kind of roundabout delinquency information. Let's see if I find it. Bottom line is Summer and her staff are mailing delinquencies out this month. Starting with the big, the big persons or big people first, I guess, and most expensive people first. So it's, it's in the works. DCNR poll study report received. That's what Matt and Lisa have in front of them, the big thick, it's about two hundred pages. We have submitted everything back to DCNR. They sent me an email today. They're looking for one more document. We have the information. They want to put it into a specific document. Summer and I will work on that and get that submitted, and then we'll be able to get our money back that owed to us from DCNR was about fifteen thousand dollars. Teamsters update. Still working the contract with the police, the Teamsters contract. We had another meeting today. And Monday, we're going to meet again, try to consolidate all our notes together with some more analysis for the personnel committee, and then we'll get that out to council after we talk to the personnel committee. But it's still ongoing. Biggest issues there are the raises, the healthcare, and stipends and some other stuff. Basically, anything that has to do with money is a big, big thing for the police department. Bags without tags? That, that's an ongoing saga. That, my phone rings nonstop about bags without tags. Let's see. Let's see, the paper. That's what they just sent you, Scott? Yeah. So here's what we're talking about. Tier ones, forty-five dollars a quarter. Tier twos, fifty-five dollars a quarter. Tier three, sixty-five dollars a quarter. Second fee, ice collection. Fee for bag without tag is five bucks, which is ten percent of a full quarter fee. So you're paying ten percent of a full quarter's fee for one bag.
How do you, how do you get to speak here? Like you're talking about the garbage now, right?
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about. Here's a single person. I got all these, and I probably have a hundred more in my home. Why I got to pay forty-five sixty dollars? And you won't have me choose a different garbage company.
Do you want to speak, sir? You can go speak now because it's on the agenda. You don't have to wait to the end.
Yeah, my name is Howard Everly, one thirty-two, one twenty-four North Grant. Like I said, I probably have a hundred, a hundred more these days doing things. And I got to keep paying that money every month. Now, that's unfair for one person, like retired or wherever, to pay that kind, you know? And then now you're doing the same thing with the water bill. I mean, it's unreal. You got, you're getting three hundred dollars a month between the water and the sewage everybody's at a one person versus a whole family. And it's terrible, like I said, right here, it is. Not kind of want to spend today, almost two hundred dollars downstairs. And I eat out. I don't have, my grocery bag, you probably don't get twenty pounds a week if you can eat anything. You didn't make something there for those people or single people or you probably don't want to hear it, but you're robbing us, you know? I mean, it's hard to hardly explain other than that for, for, what do you say, one bag a week? If we're a week, get ten. I don't want to have one bag a week. So I, sometimes I take them, I use them little weight bags now. Use one of them. It'll last me two weeks. I don't need it. That's why I don't use it. There needs to be some kind of clause in there for, I mean, I just heard you say about raising more money. It's unreal already.
Raising more money where, sir?
Forty-five dollars for the, for the garbage.
Oh, no, we're not talking about raising any money here.
Is that what you, I thought that's just what you said.
When I'm explaining to council what the current rates are, we're not talking about raising any fees, no.
Oh, wait, and what the current rates are, there ought to be something there that you could do for us senior citizens or people that live at Landers.
What, if I may? What this discussion we're talking about here is what the current rates are in town for the citizens. Now, there are people that do want to make rate changes or refuse process changes. That's why I'm bringing it up in this meeting to talk to council about. And it goes along the line of what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise, like I said, we would dumpster where I spent time. I could put my garbage in there. I don't even need a garbage man. But you make me have it, you know? Just same way with the sewage. I mean, if I live alone, my water should be as high as people, five people. It's unfair.
Now, the one thing is we don't provide water to the borough, that's the county. We don't have anything to do with the water bill.
I know, but I'm just trying to make it all overall point of
Yeah, okay.
story is. And one, I got one more thing on the street. Are you talking about streets? Like I said, I live at one twenty-fourty. Sir, my parent's back to sewer up. I put that soft amicite in there a year and a half ago, a year ago. And I talked to the borough manager, which one of you are. And you said this year they're going to pave the street on, on the grand street. I haven't seen it yet, and I still got the area dragging house because they put that set soft amicite in.
One twenty-four North Grant?
Yes.
We can get that fixed.
I stopped with that. You then apparently before about that.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Everly.
I wrote that down. Take care. So the bottom line is the bags without tags dilemma. I think this is something that, instead of going into detail tonight, I had a bunch of numbers and facts and stuff where I think this is something that should go to law and order and finance committee if it's okay with you guys. Status, the Heritage Fire Truck, I think Matt, you sent an email on that. I talked to Brandon Basin, and he said they have a meeting later this week, and he'll have more information and numbers and stuff next week, but he won't have it for the council meeting tonight. Where's Sean? Did he talk to you about this at all?
Uh, yes.
Brandon?
Yeah, I spoke with him this afternoon.
Okay. Now, the one, the one thing in your email, Matt, you were asking about, you know, the plan for paying and stuff. So before this council was in place, the other council back in April, March or April twenty twenty-three, agreed to raise the fire tax, and they voted on it in May, ahead of time. So by raising the fire tax to three mils, which is roughly three hundred thousand dollars, that's what they were gonna use to pay for the fire truck. The three hundred thousand dollars they get a year, so reading the contract, it states that once the fire truck is complete in Florida and the special's complete, we have seven days to pay the full amount, which is roughly one point six million. So the borough at that time, we're talking about getting a loan from the borough to pay for the truck, and then using the fire tax to come, to pay, pay the loan, which is three hundred thousand dollars a year. So what would come out of that would be the allocations, and the rest would go towards the fire truck.
How many days to pay the full amount?
Seven days.
Do you think raising the fire tax is gonna cover that? When we can't even get, when we can't even get people to pay their taxes, whether they're on the garbage bill and everything else, and they're delinquent? And here's, here's truth that we're delinquent, we haven't done anything out, so I don't think raising it, hurting, hurting the, uh, our, our citizens in raising taxes, you might not get, what are we gonna do, we're gonna keep operating in red? But we, we can't do that.
Who said we're operating in red?
Well, we're gonna be.
It's on the chart here, it says you guys wanna invest a half a million dollars, so.
No, no, we, no, we didn't invest any half.
Right there, I was told to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Parking meters. That's been an ongoing thing for, since I've been here. And I got charts and stuff I can show you, I've reached out to several parking companies, parking meter firms, parking meter corporations. They keep saying they'll go back to me and they won't, because what, what they want us to do is buy completely new parking meters. And that's not what the plan is, I understand, so my recommendation, if you wanna update the parking meters in town, I think we need to put a bid out with exactly what we're looking for to do. If we wanna replace all the guts, if you wanna have the ability to do, uh, like pay with your phone, that kinda stuff, I think we need to do a bid because of the dollar amount. Parking meters are not cheap, I mean, they're expensive. And we have eight hundred and some in town, the parking authority has a bunch, but once that parking authority goes away, that's gonna come back to the borough. So we can't use the parking authority's money, and they're using their money this year to pave the Easthamers parking lot. So they're using their whole bank account to do that, so we're not gonna have any money from the parking firms. If you want to upgrade the parking meters in town, I recommend we do a bid. I sent a note to PSAB today asking them if, cause I couldn't find it on their website, where municipalities could go to their website and place bids for things like parking meters, vehicles, that kinda stuff. And, because that's where everybody goes, they look at the PSAB site to see what's going on for municipalities, and wait for a response on that. Cause I think that'd be the first place we wanna look is there. Once I get more information from PSAB and these other parking meter companies, I'll reach out to you and let you know when I find out.
Do we have any type of inventory? The meters, like, how many are ten cent meters, how many are quarter meters?
Scott might know that.
Yeah, I have to find out.
You wanna break down?
Might be a good starting place to see what we have, because time doesn't do too much.
Well, I think we need to put it out for bid and get, please get a bid, but.
Yeah, I can get the breakdown.
I mean, it's pretty obvious. We have a meter person working four hours a day. And it's pretty obvious if we're making money.
I'll put some stuff together, have you?
Yeah.
Okay. Now I'll get back to council. And police station, where are we at, right here, police station, you wanted that on there, have you, you wanna talk about the police station at all?
I, I, I think we, I think we need to make a decision there, you know, in the near future. Did you get a final price on the, on the water authority?
They won't tell me what it is. They won't tell anybody what the appraised value is. I mean, we all have an idea, um, but, but they won't tell anybody officially. There are people that know, but they won't tell us. For the appraised value of MCMA building. And I think that's our best option if we don't build a building, um, would be if we could get the MCMA building.
You know, it's, it's, it's at the point where we need to decide what we're gonna do, or we're gonna keep paying four hundred dollars every.
Four thousand, four thousand, four thousand.
Four thousand dollars every month. You know, right, and we can have a building somewhere for that.
Well, this is one reason I gotta hold that consulting company. Because there are grants that open up, but they're only like once a year, and you gotta be on them when they open up, especially for police stations, cause that is one of the grants that opens up, Art Cap or something, Dave, you ever hear that? Something like Art Cap. And that's why I wanted to talk to a consulting company, keep their eyes open for that, and like I said, does contract.
We've been knowing what they're gonna do next, next week, and in the meantime, I'll make some phone calls, see if I can get some of that money.
Okay. Number thirteen, refuse office is closed Friday, Amber is on bereavement leave, her, uh, it's death in the family. She's gone all week, and she's just on vacation next week, that was already pre-planned, and pre-planned this week was the other employee has a medical appointment in Harrisburg, so the office will be closed Friday. Fire chief.
City handled sixteen calls for service, Heritage handled nineteen. We had a department training last, out at Parsons, did some vehicle rescue, really well, had a good turnout. Most of you know, the city took delivery of the reboot, very nice unit, I think it's serving community well.
Did you guys use the new tools during the training?
Yes.
We bought dark night gear.
Yes. Very nice setup. That's all I have. Do you have anything for me? I thought I'm gonna get out here. All right, thank you.
I'll get ahold if I need something.
All right.
Thanks, Sean.
Yep, you bet. Uh, Raymond said he'll forward all the information to you guys about the water truck, as soon as he gets up.
Uh, the mayor's not here, does anybody have a report?
Didn't pass anything along to me, so.
Okay.
All right, there you are.
For calls for service for July, four hundred and six, traffic citations, a hundred and fourteen, thirty-two non-traffics, forty-seven warnings, four DUI arrests were made. Parking tickets, three hundred and thirty-nine meter tickets, six hundred and thirty-three for, um, street maintenance. Total revenue for the tickets written was thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty-five, the total collected in July was nine thousand three hundred and thirty. Uh, for the drug report for the month, the Department of Alcoholics Investigator, we had five active investigations, five new investigations, three control buys, six felony arrests, four search warrants. And I think there's some pictures there that show some of the, this stuff that was seized, approximately fifteen grams of heroin and fentanyl, thirty-five grams of methamphetamine, thirty-nine grams of cocaine or crack, and about a pound of marijuana was seized. There's some of the pictures there, and also our five firearms, uh, in that one where we seized a pound of marijuana. Uh, two of the firearms had obliterated serial numbers, and were possessed by a person that's not to possess firearms. And also ten thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars in cash was seized, well. Pretty busy month for the drug investigators to lie. Uh, we did a national night out on August sixth, last Tuesday, um, the weather wasn't the best and fully cooperate, but we still had a pretty decent turnout. And, uh, it was well-attended considering the unpredictable weather we had. And we'd like to thank all the volunteers and the sponsors and organizations who participated, and all those that helped plan the event, and all the, all those that came out, participated, so. That's all I have for now.
Rec board, so the meeting for the rec board was, was canceled. But some stats for you, pool attendance for the year is, uh, five thousand five hundred, a titu in persons in the last sixty-nine days, which is averaging seventy-three people per day. I had looked, but I think that's higher than last year by quite a bit, so I think they did a super job down there, council did a super job. Pool's still closing on the twenty-fourth, but until then, I think the pool's closing at five every day.
Limited hours, yeah.
Yeah, limited hours, because the, the, the slowing, slowing down, students going back, you know, the like part, it's, it's closing at twenty-four, obviously.
Mark?
Kim had sent around a resolution that Delphon adopted recently, having to do with public comment. I just wanted the, you know, council to have a chance to take a look, to see if you'd be interested in adopting something with the long news and letters. Did everybody have a chance to look at it? Anybody have any questions or comments on it?
I can't even put historic Louis Towne on ours, but yours seventeen ninety-five too.
Well, you can, go ahead.
So the high level of this, Mark, is it, it limits the time, and you have to identify yourself?
Right, uh, you, right, you have to provide identification, identify yourself, it limits it to borough residents and taxpayers. And just provide some guidelines for the, the public.
Is it just residents, Mark?
Residents and taxpayers.
What about business owners?
That's not included, but could they?
In the past, meetings I attended, it was, uh, residents and property owners.
Right, that's the tax patterns.
So you can be a property owner, live out of town, still a company.
Right, right.
I think we should look into something like this.
I'll bring something next week.
Law and ordinance?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, yeah, we can talk about it tomorrow. That's all I have.
Finance committee, cause I understand why they added this agenda, they wanna move five hundred thousand dollars in the general fund to a money market? And I got some rates and stuff here. I guess there's something you guys discussed in the finance, finance committee.
So, question, uh, for someone, if we were to take a half a million dollars out of the, the general fund, and put it into the money market, how accessible is that money we use in pensioners? There's, there's terms here, it would be three months up to a year, but what would the penalties look like if we had to withdraw early?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know about if there is any penalties, I know the, the, the situation is when we did the first one, that it's, it's fluid.
Yeah.
And, and then, and the one we have now comes up, uh, end of September, mid to late September, so that'll have to be no discussion.
So the bulk of the money that's sitting in, say, general fund, is it drawing any type of interest now?
So right now, the interest we're getting on what's in the general fund is only two point five seven percent. Um, so our current interest we get a year is around thirty-two thousand for everything we have for the general fund, the, the market we have in the capital account. But if we put another five hundred thousand in, then that pumps that up to about forty-five thousand a year, so. Now it's a thirteen thousand dollars more we could be getting.
Yeah, I mean, if we were to move, say, a half a million dollars in there, do you feel that you have enough operating funds to work with in the general fund?
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we proceed with, um, moving forward with exploring our options, can you bring the rates up again there once?
Yep.
What's the general thoughts around the table?
Right now, Kish Bank is where we have the other five hundred thousand.
Looks like they're paying the most for twelve a month.
And the one we have right now is actually five point three two percent, so it's, I don't know. It hasn't dropped, so hopefully it'll hold one, the next one will also renew again.
What is, what is FNB, which, which bank is that?
Professional.
I would, I, I kinda agreed up with Ron Scott, but I would caution the borough putting all the money in one bank, because that looks like favoritism. You're only talking three one-hundredths of a percent, um, so interest, so you can put it for, you only lose three one-hundredths of a, what's that, for thirty bucks, I don't know what it is at the time. I just know great stuff about municipalities, gotta be careful about putting it all in one, like, always in one bank, because it looks like favoritism.
Or main by kids, JVP, so.
My personal opinion, I don't see favoritism being an issue. My recommendation would be go with Kish Bank at five point three three, that gets us the most bank for the buck, and we earn the most money. Second.
Their pledge support is due for DLI, we talked about this last year, the annual pledge of five thousand dollars. Basically for the main, mainstream annual position or downtown Louis Towne.
What, what's it for, Kim?
It's for downtown Louis Towne.
Yeah.
Jim Zubler, well, he's in the, he's in office, didn't go in there. Jim Zubler and what downtown Louis Towne does for the borough. We do five thousand every year since I've been here, I think it's standard. I'll make the motion, we'll prove the five thousand.
Give us a second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
A vote?
Then you got the fire department quarterly allocation of eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars each.
I'll make the motion to approve the quarterly allocations. Sorry.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote?
Fame's third quarter allocation, five thousand six hundred and twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the third quarter allocation.
In favor, say aye. Vote?
Next thing is, I think it's Bingam, I got Bingam, anyways, you know the property that's, uh, we tore the house down, the old hotel at the Point down there, is what I call it. You received an email from a citizen requesting interest in buying the property from the borough. I received a phone call today from another person that's interested in purchasing the property, but that can't happen until we have it appraised. So what I would need, if you guys wanna go forward with this, I would need permission to get the property appraised. Once we get the appraisal, then you can go forward with your discussion about selling. But it's gonna be appraised first, cause if it's appraised for over six thousand dollars, it has to be disposed of through a public bid.
I have a question, do we have any out-of-pocket expenses with raising the building?
No, I gotta hold the state and the street clear, we can do everyone with it.
So we didn't have any out-of-pocket expenses?
That was a grant that we received with Jim Zubler and, uh, getting our, that's fine. There, you're right, there's no out-of, out-of-pocket, there's no, uh, anything over, over our head, no leads. State says we own it, it's done deal, it's part of the law, it's whatever we wanna do with it. I was gonna, until this is brought up, just leave us green space, we're getting hyperceded, for people who walk their dogs, running down that end of town, but you guys weren't selling, I don't have a problem with it, I just have to get permission to appraise it.
We appraised that one, let's do the one on, uh, off one, uh.
Ridge Street?
Ridge Road two, we're, we're paying to maintain that. Let's get them both appraised at the same. Let's get them both appraised the same. That's a form of a motion. Also, I'm not in favor of selling either one at this point.
Just considering if you are looking at selling that corner, it's a very strategic corner. So you would want to put, I, I would recommend you would look at, uh, putting some kind of stipulation on what would be developed there, or, you know, what happens, so give some protection. If somebody uses it for, uh, a use that is not in keeping with, with what you folks are, are thinking, that at least provides you some protection. I know you haven't voted to sell it, but keep that in mind.
Good luck with that, thanks.
Yeah.
Can we make money off of that?
We don't know until we get it appraised. Well, technically, you would be, you need to sort of for a thousand bucks to make money, because you have no money in it. So, yes, we could make money, but we don't know how much, basically, Matt's right, we don't know what it's going to praise for. You know, so.
Plus it would fall in the tax rules or something.
Correct. And I don't care who buys it, and I really don't care, it's just an issue of got to get it appraised first.
I think Matt made a motion to.
Say both properties appraised.
Second?
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote.
All right, police car bid, I believe we have three bids. We will open it up now.
This one is, do I want to say the name?
Yeah, answer it, yeah.
Daniel Baumberger, $769. Rodney Hobbs, $915. Ryan Hartley, $550.
So the highest bid is bid number two for $915. If you want to sell it for that amount, you just need approval from council.
Sir.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote.
Refuge needs dumpsters. Um, as you know, it's an ongoing thing with them getting banged up and stuff. And it's in their budget, it's already in their budget for this year, and they need the approved quote, or they need the quote approved for $7,654.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote.
All right. Next up is I and I stuff. All 12 borough homeowners be upgraded to allow for internet access for a one-time monthly subsidy of $12,720. This has already gone through finance committees, I remember Scott and Jim and.
That's part one kind of ties in with part two.
Yeah. So part one, you have motion?
Yeah.
Second. On favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote.
And part two. Complementing the upgrade to the borough equipment will be the rental of 12 shark fins or floatar at, uh, $4,800 per month for five years.
Second.
On favor say aye? Vote.
Great briefing, Tom and Lucas, thanks.
Good God, I have my displays here.
I know. Number 10. Thanks. Tire recycling event, Pennsylvania Cleanways, we do it every year, it's going to be 21 September, I believe, at the, at the warehouse. We need approval from council to conduct that event. There's no man hours, ready expense us. Ben usually goes down that day on that Saturday and runs it with the volunteers that are down there.
Sure.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote.
And I believe that's the last thing I have, Mr. President, for the meeting. I have nothing for representatives.
Kim, what are we doing with that ARPA money that we, you and I talked about? Is there any discussion to be made?
No, I have to build the 37,000 roughly, and I know it, I mean, that's all I know. Ask council wherever you want to do this. I mean, don't come to me back and ask about it or anything.
I'd like to make a motion if we put that towards the fire department in the new rescue vote. What's, what's this?
You get about 30, roughly 37,000 left in ARPA, plus or minus, um, that's still in ARPA, and you got to have it spent committed by December. He's making a motion to, to use what's left in ARPA to go toward the rescue vote for city.
I need a second.
I'll start.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call, okay.
Uh, hold on, um, do we have to add this to the agenda?
Yeah, you should do a motion.
Okay, so to, to make a motion.
Make a motion, we add this to the agenda.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote.
Now the motion to.
Now the discussion.
First and second, on favor say aye?
Aye.
I will. Roll call, please. Roll call.
And this is the, what's left in there, zeroing it out, Matt, right?
That's correct.
Zero, okay, zeroing it out.
Bob Barlet.
Yes.
Steve Nutson.
Yes.
Scott Ketchaw.
Yes.
Harvey Seer.
Wow.
Jim Steele.
Yes.
Matt Moore.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
What was it, somewhere about 30, about 37,000, right, roughly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the loan are you going to pay for? And this is just reimbursing the city, or how's it?
There's 56,000 some change left, this will go towards that.
It's actually less than that.
Is it now less?
The loan amount from Kish Bank is currently $54,817.66. It was originally a $100,000 loan, we have already paid off half of it.
All right, so 37,000, so you'll be down to less than 20,000. That's all I have, sir, that's all I can listen to.
Thank you, everybody.